Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the May 25th meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kaloe has our dog from the Dog Pound today. A lively, beautiful, big dog.
Oh, it's up by you.
Come here. It's green. It's working. Come on, Paul. Come on up, Taylor. We have a special guest today. The Commissioner Williams invited up, and we're gonna let her talk about the dog that we've got for adoption at the dog kennel, Taylor Brown. Here, sit down. I thought you said he sits, Jack?
He does.
Sits. Listen to my kids. Go ahead, Kaloe.
Um, he's a male. He's a boxer mix. He's open for adoption at 3 o'clock PM and...
On Saturday.
On Saturday.
Thank you, Taylor. And if he's not your type of dog, stop by our kennel. We have a lot of other great dogs for adoption.
Can you work with Commissioner Kaloe now?
What's that? I missed.
You're good thing you did.
What happened?
You don't wanna know.
Okay. You were dissed. I was ditched? Okay.
Disrespected.
No, no, I would never do that.
The elected Tea Party guy, what do you think? Madam Court?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet from employees within the jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kaloe. Given some appointments by some of the Commissioners this morning, I do not have any issues for executive session that cannot wait until next week. Therefore, which is rather rare for us, we don't need to go into an executive session today at the conclusion of our meeting. Thank you.
Approving way of the reading in the same of the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of May 11th and 18th?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize a regional cooperative agreement between the counties of Cuyahoga, Ashtruba, and Lake for submerged land sublease payments, Lake Erie Energy Development Corporation. This is effective for five years. Project is approximately seven miles offshore from downtown Cleveland, northwest of Brown Stadium in Lake Erie. This will consist of no more than 30 megawatts of power generation. Formula for shared revenue is Cleveland-Cuyahoga Port Authority, 40,000, 40, excuse me, 40% 11,000. Ashtruba Lake and Lorain Counties will receive 20% is 5,500. Submerged land lease payment will be approximately 11,000 per turbine annually consisting of five turbines.
If I can start this off, I'd like to bring Mike Challenger up, our sustainability person. Mike, if you can join us. Just some background, I've been forwarding information to the Board of Commissioners, it seems like years now. We've been working on this for about five years. For those of you not familiar with LEEDCO, it's a Lake Erie Energy Development Corporation. It consists of, it started with Cuyahoga County and Prosecutor Bill Mason and Steve Dever, his assistant leading the charge. Lorain County was invited on board a few years ago as a second member, and we've since expanded to Ashtruba and Lake County. This is probably one of the first multi-county revenue-sharing agreements in the state of Ohio. It covers a large population, almost 2 million people in total, and I'd like to move on it, but if Mike can give us some background, he's been working on the allocation committee and how we came up with this formula. It's already been passed by the Cleveland Port Authority, who's the representative for Cuyahoga County, County of Ashtruba and Lake County. So it would be the fourth and final piece of the puzzle to start this. And Mike, I'll probably turn it over to you and then take questions from the Commissioners and concerns they make. Yeah, go ahead, it's all yours.
Good morning, Commissioners. Over the last few years, we've been thinking about, with the four counties that are involved, is we didn't want developers to pit one county against another with projects in Lake Erie. So we got together and we decided, well, let's share in the revenues, no matter where the turbines go, and that way there can't be a competition pitting one county against another. And in that case, the best projects would go in the water first. And in the committee, we were looking, how the submerged land leases work is shoreline communities have jurisdiction from the shoreline two miles out. Anything further than two miles out is the responsibility of the county. They have the jurisdiction over those waters to the Canadian border. In the case of Cuyahoga County, years ago when they established the Cleveland-Cuyahoga County Port Authority, they allowed the Port Authority to have that jurisdiction, and that's why the Port Authority is listed in this document. In talking with everyone, the other counties, we felt that if the turbine, we were looking at a match, an even match across the board, but we started thinking, well, the county that the turbines are in should get a bigger benefit. And looking at the numbers, the 40%, 20%, 20%, 20% seemed to be fair, and all the different counties agreed to move forward with that formula. Now, this formula is a temporary formula in that it's only for the initial project, which is between 20 and 30 megawatts of production, which means it'll be five to eight turbines installed. And it's only for five years. But during that five years, the allocation committee will be convening with all the various county members, and we'll be looking to establish a more formal revenue-sharing formula. Right now, this was put together without much, I wouldn't say without much understanding, with a lot of understanding, but there's still things that we're unaware of because this is so new to the industry in the United States.
Well, let's expand on this, what we're talking about.
Okay.
Going forward, as you're all aware, we cannot collect income taxes for any job development, which would be in the four major ports they're speaking of the work coming out of. So this will lead to working with the municipalities on JET agreements or JEDs agreements, joint economic development, so the workers who are installing the turbines out past the two-mile mark in the city municipality jurisdiction will still be able to collect an income tax and hopefully an income tax split among the lakefront communities all the way through. I mean, that's the next version of this agreement, sitting down municipalities once we get the sighting and we start to work on actually putting up the wind turbines.
Correct. This formula is one of the first revenue-sharing formulas among four counties in the state of Ohio, in that once this is established, we plan on working on other forms of revenue sharing. For instance, all wind turbines located in the water have a royalty payment, and the royalty payment is based on the amount of kilowatt-hours or energy that's produced from the turbines, and it might be a thousandth of a cent. But when you have such big turbines, that could mean a lot of money that could be shared. And in the initial project, when you're just talking five to eight turbines, it's not a lot. But the goal of LEEDCO is to install 250 turbines in the waters of Lake Erie by 2020. And when you start looking at those kinds of numbers, then it starts to generate real revenue for the counties involved.
And there's an incentive there for First Energy and the other power companies, AEP, to purchase that wind power because based on Senate Bill 221 from a couple of years ago, where we're quite involved in, they have to generate 12.5% from renewable energy, wind slash solar. So this is a big step for the counties working cooperatively. It hasn't been easy, been a lot of discussion, a lot of dialogue. You can jump in anytime, Mr. Innis. You guys have been a big part of this, you and Matt Mieschek from the Prosecutor's Office. Any comments along the way? Or?
I was just wondering, what type of revenue sharing are we gonna get as far as percentage?
Well, what it is, it's a 20% cut of the half. All the submerged land leases, there will be, 50% goes right to the state of Ohio, and the other 50% is to the four counties in LEEDCO. And wherever the project's cited at, that county would get 40%. So currently, under this initial program, the first five to eight turbines will be in Cuyahoga County waters, so they would receive 40% of the revenue, which works out to from $11,000 to $16,000 a year. And then we would be anywhere from $5,500 to $9,000 a year on Lorain County's portion as a shared agreement. And then talking, going up to 250 wind turbines by 2020. And this agreement will continue to evolve. The allocation committee is actually working on other scenarios as this project gets larger, and Mike's a key component of the allocation committee, along with Matt Mieschek advising us from the legal side from our county prosecutor's office.
Will you answer one of my questions, whether or not that was a yearly amount of revenue that we were gonna receive? So it's once a year, based on wherever the wind turbines are? Now, you said from, is it from the shoreline to two miles out, is that the property owner's portion?
No, that's, no, that's the jurisdiction for taxing authority in the municipalities. Two miles out to the international line?
Then it's county, okay. So where is the property owner's border?
Well, the property owner is, I understand...
That lives on the lake.
Is at the beach.
High water, low water mark.
Yes. And the jurisdictional entity would be the municipality that property is located on. For instance, in the city of Lorain, it would be under the jurisdiction of the Lorain Port Authority. Sheffield Lake, it would be under the jurisdiction of Sheffield Lake and Avon Lake.
But you're saying the property owners, the rights to the property owners that live on the lake, that's still in litigation right now as far as how far their property goes out into the lake?
Yeah, but it's, you're only talking 100 yards or so, Commissioner. This is anywhere from two to seven miles out from shore. So this isn't a property owner's issue.
Okay.
This is a taxation jurisdiction on who would collect revenues based on the work performed or the sighting of the turbines. Yes.
If you will, I did talk with Matt Mieschek about this, and I believe he talked to Mike about it. We did have one concern, since the projected plan is that this go to 2020, is we were a little concerned as to why it's only five years. Why isn't it for, you know, our recommendation would have been that the agreement be for that entire period of time. Apparently, we're in the minority as to what everybody wants and what every, I guess this is the best agreement you can get together, but that was our only concern.
Right. I understand what you're saying, Jerry, but in discussion of the eight years, this is just a beginning resolution proposal. As the project expands and crosses into other jurisdictions and the revenues change, this agreement will evolve. That's the intent, and that's where the members of the Board have agreed to continue working on this. But this is the first part. What this does, this triggers another commitment from the Cleveland Foundation, who's one of the main funders of this project, along with Nortech and the City of Cleveland in Cuyahoga County, to go to the next level, another phase, so.
I just got the information on this yesterday. I know you've been working on it for years. I guess my only concern, and I shouldn't say concern, but question is, Cuyahoga County or the Cuyahoga Port Authority is on board with this program, why?
Correct.
So the question is, why, as far as if they're gonna give 20% back to other counties? I'm trying to see their angle and where their benefit's gonna come from.
Oh, that's a good question. If you look at the estimated wind speeds in Lake Erie, the higher wind speeds are off the shores of Avon, or Avon Point, which would be Lorain County, and also in Ashtruba.
Right.
And if a wind turbine developer wanted to maximize the electricity generated, they would put the turbines where the higher wind speeds are at. The reason that they're in Cleveland right now is that three years ago, the Great Lakes Energy Development Task Force, with the help of Green Energy Ohio, installed a tall mast, and they've been measuring the wind speeds at the crib in Cleveland.
Right.
And they've also done some bird and bat studies around the crib, and also some fish studies.
Well, I know with Avon Lake, taking a look at it, they're quadrant three when it comes to wind speed, and that versus other areas through the state are around seven. What do you think the likely, or how many wind turbines do you think we're gonna get in Avon, Avon Lake over the next 10 to 15 years? I mean, any estimates or?
Of the 250, the turbines, because the location where they're going in right now, Commissioner, is in Cuyahoga County, but it's very close to the Lorain County line, I perceive that the next movement would be towards Lorain County.
Towards Lorain County, okay.
And Lorain County benefits, again, because there's a substation in Avon Lake that could potentially be a tie-in.
Yeah. Jennifer Fenderbosh has been giving me a lot of notes on this, so.
Jennifer's been working very hard. We've been working with her for four or five years. She does a nice job.
Now, with the five years that we're looking at, and just looking long-term and with what Mr. Innis said, is, could the contract get worse for Lorain County?
I do not believe so. Because, again, I didn't finish my answer, Commissioner, I apologize. But the reason Cuyahoga County is interested in the partnership is that if the development does go towards the areas with higher wind speeds, then not as many turbines would be located in Cuyahoga County waters. So therefore, if they're a partner initially in this, then as the projects get developed out, they'll still receive a percentage of the revenues from submerged land leases.
And the mayors have been involved with this, Rob?
No, this is county level. We haven't got to the income tax issue. Everything is in jurisdictional waters, other than the City of Cleveland, because their muni power has agreed to take power as a transfer area. So the next step will be to the municipalities on the waterfront.
Okay. Have you heard any concerns from the mayors regarding this?
Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Jackson has?
No, no, he's been very positive.
Well, I guess, let me rephrase it. Have you had any concerns from Lorain County mayors?
No.
No?
Mayor Pescu has actually been to most of the meetings, or Representative Andy C., Representative from Lorain, and Jennifer Fenderbosh never misses a meeting. So those are our three municipalities on the water, and they've all been supportive of the project.
Like I say, it's a six-year project that you've been working on, so. Sorry for all the questions.
No, that's okay, that's fine. That's why I sent all the information. But it is, when you're talking about multi-county revenue sharing and getting agreements with four different legal departments, or five different legal departments, and multitudes of bodies involved, and different commissioners, and issues at the state that we've been working on, quite cumbersome.
We've been working, LEEDCO has been working, and prior to the creation of LEEDCO, meetings have been held with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and Coastal Management, because they currently did not have a way to collect revenue from the submerged land leases for wind turbines. So it's creating a whole new set of rules and standards that didn't exist before now. And what our main goal is, is to push this through, or to install them as quickly as possible, is we want to be the first location in North America to have offshore wind turbines.
Because that will generate the job growth because of those, the manufacturers of the major parts, the tier-one suppliers, and we have a lot of tier-two. You actually had one of them last year, last week, called manufacturing. The tier-one manufacturers will then locate to wherever they are selling them at first, and then they will be transported to other Great Lakes, hopefully. New York's been working on it, Ontario, Canada's been working on it, but they've shelved theirs currently. They've had some issues up there. Illinois is working on it, and Michigan also. So first in the water is one where the manufacturers will locate at.
And what's nice with Northern Ohio is we have the port of Lorain, Cuyahoga Port, Fairport Harbor, Ashtruba, and, Ashtruba and Conneot, all have port facilities that could generate industry and jobs to, for the offshore wind turbine industry.
And also onshore.
And onshore, yes. The parts are so big, the manufacturer likes to locate them close to where they're being installed.
Right. We currently have a blade manufacturer in Ashtruba County, MFG?
MFG.
They're, and they...
They have a factory in Iowa where they make wind turbines, and they're in the running to make the blades for the GE wind turbines.
Any other questions?
Not for me.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Under 911 Sheriff, approve contract with H.E. McDonald, representing H.E.M. Integration, to set phases as relates to the constellation of services with 911 and Sheriff's Dispatch Center. Authorize County Administrator to execute unnecessary documents on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors who was to form. Costs is $92 per hour, and travel expenses now to exceed $100 hours maximum per phase.
So moved.
Second.
Now, Mr. Cordez, we have two issues with Mr. McDonald working on the combination of 911 and the Sheriff's Dispatch, and he's also working on a long-term look, should any other municipalities want to join in with us in the future. So this is just for our 911 and Sheriff's Dispatch co-location process?
Correct.
Okay.
Currently, we have two concurrent, parallel approaches to potentially uniting some of these widespread services in Lorain County. The one that we are aggressively tackling right now is the combining of Sheriff dispatching with the current 911 emergency dispatching. We want to get them in the same building, and then we start working on procedures and slowly merge those two units into one. While that's going on, other communities having discussions on a larger basis for the potential of thereafter joining with that organization for potentially saving some money for them in their dispatching. We do a lot of fire now, we don't do really any, any police. I would like to get the rest of the fire on board while they're still doing the police dispatching study, but that's another process that we'll, we'll be working on. Good news is that this is proposals for the technology and to start streamlining the positions needed. The first step, and I don't know how much we've talked about out here, we've talked about it a lot out here and in all of our discussions when I've been able to meet with you, would be to have dispatching housed at the telecommunications center. Both those operations will still run pretty seamlessly separate. The flip of the switch will not be known by any end-users at that point, because there'll be really separate operations in the same room. At that point, we will start to combine the work procedures, the SOPs, staffing, the various managerial roles. We have a, we have a well-charted map that we're using, and I met with the prosecutor, I think it was Monday. We worked on the MOU. We met with the union Monday. We're, I believe we have about 90% of our issues resolved with the union. We have some issues with the union out at the Sheriff's Department that need to be resolved. You now have the technology proposal, and we're also working on the, the structure of a TAO for organizational leadership. So I think things are progressing very nicely. Table of Organization. Actually, just TO would be fine. The, so I'm very confident that this is going to achieve some results, in fact, more rapidly, I think, than we anticipated. I don't want to be too optimistic. We had talked about sometime mid-fall, but we may be able to accelerate that schedule if things stay on track. A lot will have to do with more of the capital, human capital logistics than the equipment logistics, but some of those have timeframes. So the equipment logistics won't be done for about 60 days. And of course, we have to work with the leads, moving the leads and so forth. But I think, I think everybody's on track and things are on track. Of course, that'll look really, really great, except that we'll be in the same building doing separate jobs. The real work comes when we need to start melding those, those procedures together, which I believe is going to take anywhere from, from six to 10 months to, to meld those procedures together. Because we have to do that very slowly, and, and we have to incorporate those things and do the training and staff development so that we don't have any glitches. We don't, we don't, we're not allowed to have glitches in that type of, of the work. So that'll, that'll take some time, but, but we're moving in a very, very positive direction. I'm very happy with the progress we're making.
Awesome. And how close are we on the memorandum of understanding with the sheriff? Are we?
I think that, Jerry, you may want to speak to that. I thought we only had minor...
Yeah, we just have a couple, couple paragraphs we're gonna tweak and get it back to the sheriff.
Good. Because I don't know if I mentioned, when I had my 911 meeting last week, there were some dispatchers from other cities that were concerned that, you know, are they going to be forced into coming on board with us? And I just told them, you know, if their municipality decides to come on board with us, that would be up to each individual entity, that we are not forcing anybody to come to the county to do their dispatching. So, you know, I don't know how many entities we'll be able to accommodate. I mean, I know Lorain and Illyria have shown interest, and there's been a couple other municipalities that have shown an interest in possibly joining with the county, but I don't know if we'll be able to do the entire, you know, county at this point in the facility that we're in. So that's another thing that Hal's also looking at.
Well, I, that, that's something he's working with that group on. I anticipate Grafton following pretty close behind.
And Oberlin, maybe?
Oberlin's shown an interest. Grafton's the largest interest, followed by Oberlin, and we may be able to incorporate Grafton even before the dispatches, the dispatching is combined in-house into one unit. So we'll be looking at that also. But I, but I need to point out the obvious, because sometimes the obvious is invisible to us, even if it's right in front of us. We're consolidating to reduce overlapping jobs and overlapping resources. So if those units do combine with us sometime in the future, there will be job reductions. I, I need to make that clear, that if, if the other group is working under the assumption that we take over their dispatching, we just, you know, move their, their human capital into our room and we just start doing it, I think they're working under some, some reasonably poor assumptions, because the staffing will be in place, the, the volume can be turned up, and the quantity of calls without, without linearly having to add additional staff. So there will be, there will be a lot of those changes. If we weren't going to lower the cost by raising the efficiency, why would we be doing this?
Correct.
And, and I know that nobody wants to hear that out there. You know, we're in the business, and lots of things we do to create jobs, not lose jobs. But that's what happens when you combine those organizations. We'll probably have the potential for some cuts ourselves as we combine the units and we find some of the resources to be, at this point, too many, because we're increasing the efficiency and the volume while decreasing the need for additional bodies. So that, that's, when that question's asked...
But we're not anticipating very many people to get laid off in the combining of our 911 and sheriff. But I mean, if other entities come on board at a later time, once we're not just co-located, but actually combined, then if they come on board, there could be people from those entities losing their positions.
I don't think we'll know that until we get it combined. That's around my two cents. I mean, until we get the process together and what we actually need in volume of calls, and I don't know if we'll have a loss of personnel at the county.
Ourself, we've, we've already looked...
Ourselves, we've, we've already looked at the staffing situation and there'll be some minor changes with, with regard to, uh, the number of staffing. With other agencies coming in, I would suggest that, you know, a, a look down the road says if they, Ted, you figure they have, uh, uh, twenty-one, twenty-one shifts.
Right.
And in order to fill twenty-one shifts, you need at least five people, cause your staff over, but some of those have two on them. We wouldn't have the need bringing in an organization to bring in, you know, five to ten more employees.
Well, I'm just saying from the county's level, between the sheriff and nine one one, we won't know what our personnel needs are till we get to the end of that process, I would think, or close to it.
Well, the good thing is that we're, we're, we're down-staffing at nine one one through attrition that we haven't filled. We've been preparing for this. Uh, so the, the overall changes between the combining of the units should be, should not be as disruptive as they, as they could have been.
Correct.
Jim, what was the, uh, amount that we're looking at saving just for the county?
Well, the, the savings at the general fund by, uh, switching the work to nine one one will be about seven hundred thousand dollars. And my understanding was that you were going to work with the sheriff to provide for additional road patrol
Correct.
Uh, with some of the savings and then the general fund would achieve some of the savings. Seems like a, uh, you know, a relationship that should work out real well. On top of that, some of the synergies to doing it right now were, we were looking at additional equipment purchase for the wireless, uh, next phase of the wireless upgrade that, uh, works real well with the consolidation of technology. Also, the backup, um, nine one one, we call it a PSAP, uh, needs to be relocated. With the combining of, uh, the sheriff's dispatching, that leaves us a, a potential facility at, at the, at the sheriff's department that we could, uh, locate the backup PSAP into, uh, so for various reasons, you know, things came together that made this, uh, much more agreeable than it has been each time we looked at it in, in the past. But I, I think that, uh, we're going to get this accomplished and hopefully, uh, on the timeframe that I've indicated, Board, earlier.
Good. Very pleased.
Anything further?
Commissioners, I should just know, in the second line, this, that first word should be consolidation, not consolidation.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cal?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under community development, approved and entered agreement with CT consultants for RRS inspections for fiscal year ten, CDBG, formal grant in the amount of five thousand to be paid from contract services account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Cal?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family authorized purchase service agreement with U S Securities Association, Inc., Independence, for security services for state fiscal year twelve, effective July first, two thousand eleven through June thirty, two thousand twelve, and not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, twenty-four dollars. Authorized director to execute an amendment for changes in program and content and to increase value on behalf of the board of prosecutors approved as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Cal?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized purchase service group with various transportation companies to provide non-emergency medical transportation services for state fiscal year twelve, effective July first, two thousand eleven through June thirty, two thousand twelve. Authorized director to execute amendment for changes in program and content and to increase value on behalf of board of prosecutors approved as to form. One, provide a ride Cleveland not to exceed four hundred thousand and life care wheelchair services, Elyria not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Cordez, um, for non-emergency medical transportation, we're looking at over a million dollars between these two providers. It, it seems like an awful lot of money. Can you elaborate on, I mean, where does this money come from? And how many rides are they actually providing for a million dollars? I mean, I'm looking at like our transit, how much we get for transit or compared to this, it seems like an excessive amount of money.
Well, well first, well, we do have somebody here from Job and Family Services.
Oh, good.
The, the, uh, we do these contracts every year because most of these folks are challenged. Where does the funds come from? The funds come from our, our ten of dollars allocation, uh, to the state from the federal government to provide various, uh, assistance programs to those that, um, are, are most, uh, challenged and disadvantaged. The transporting folks is not an inexpensive proposition and, and we need to be able to do that. As far as transit goes, I, I think that some of the costs were a little less when, when transit was available as an option for people, um, uh, to, to get around. But right now, they really don't have a lot of options and so we, we need to contract with services for them to do that. By the way, these, these contracts were competitively bid, uh, so they, we, we went out and there was quotes and there was RFPs and so forth. Uh, I can't tell you how many rides they give or the cost per ride. I really don't have that data. I don't know if it was brought here today. Um, no, I see somebody shaking, no, he's saying no in the back. I, I know you don't like to speak, but you, you want to come up a little bit?
This is curious, what kind of rides are we providing? Are these medical, like to medical facilities? Are these for jobs? I mean, if they're non-emergency medical transportation, what kind of jo- uh, rides are we providing for people?
Just go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, good morning, Peggy Norb, Job and Family.
Hi.
Hi. Um, these are all for medical transportation, uh, medical appointments. There's nothing for employment, only for medical. We're required to provide, um, the transportation and the funding comes through Medicaid pass-through from federal government. So there's nothing out of the general fund, nothing out of Mary Lou's budget even. We, um, usually go, we are required to go from the cheapest form of transportation to the most expensive. The cheapest would be driving your own car or having somebody drive it and getting mileage reimbursement, all the way up to, um, the, the two contracts that we have on the table today. The number of trips that per month estimate is about two to three hundred per vendor. So it'd be about six hundred and the cost is about sixty to seventy thousand per month. It's very expensive. Life care is very expensive because they provide ambulance service as opposed to just, um, regular taxi or, or private vehicle type service.
So they wheelchair accessibility and things like that?
Correct. They're all wheelchair accessible.
The, uh, Peggy's been doing this for me. By the way, most of the fiscal stuff that comes up here from Job and Family Services, Peggy takes care of all that work. She's invaluable to us and she's worked for you for a long time, but you don't usually get to see her.
No. You're kind, thank you.
Any additional questions? I, again, you know, it's, it's a service that we've had and that we're required to have. I would say that there's been a little bit more reliance on it since we've had less, uh, transit operate. We used to do dollar ride a lot with the, uh, with the lift chairs and so forth.
Correct. Since, um, we've had, we haven't had public transportation, we've definitely had to rely on contracted services.
We, they used to buy tickets from us, uh, for transit, so we, we infused quite a bit of money in from the ticket sales to be able to pick people up and, and, and transport. But the, with the reduced service and hours, it's just been, you know, almost impossible to be able to provide an efficient service so that they can, they can do with the ticket. I think you still do some ticketing now.
We do tickets for, um, majority of employment if the person is close to the bus line and their employment is close to the bus line. But that's, those two entities have to meet pretty closely, you know.
Especially in light of not having much for bus lines.
Right, they have to wait a while.
Well, I'm glad to know that people with medical issues are still being able to get to their appointments, like for dialysis or doctor's appointments and things like that. Cause I know like the Goodwill's van that's going around now is, are, is also trying to help in that respect, so, um, it's a lot of money, but I'm glad it's, uh, providing, so services for people. So this would be somebody just basically that would be receiving Medicaid. They would have to be low-income, uh, on Medicaid in order to get, uh, these services as transportation for them?
Correct, everyone's on Medicaid.
Okay, all right.
An adult or their children.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything further?
I bless you.
Mr. Cal?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the transit, transfer the following vehicles, two thousand one Eldorado Aerotech three twenty, mileage is two hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty-nine to the veterans. A two thousand one Eldorado Aerotech three twenty-nine, mileage three hundred and thirty thousand, thirty-seven miles to the sheriff. And two thousand one Eldorado Aerotech three twenty-three to be taken from the fleet and placed for auction.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Do we want to talk about the, the vansies or this veterans one is going to St. Joe's?
Well, is, uh, you gonna talk about it or you gonna ask a question?
I'm gonna let you talk about it and then I'm not sure if we're allowed to talk about the one for the sheriff, are we?
Certainly.
Okay, go ahead, I'll let you explain.
Well, the first one's gonna assist with the, the homeless shelter with the veterans and some of the services out at St. Joe's. Uh, mindful that these were all surplus buses, so before anybody asks, where they were past their service life, we were able to scrap together a couple of the buses, uh, that were becoming obsolete to get some, at least some functional, uh, vehicles for the road. So that'll help out with the, uh, undertaking with veterans and, and what Todd Roby's doing out at, um, South Shore and St. Joe's. The second vehicle for the sheriff's department, uh, kinda uniquely, they, they had, this is gonna amplify their ability with the bomb squad. Didn't realize that they had so much equipment, so many things in the vans and the trucks that the people that were putting on the suits and changing and stuff were doing it outside. And the thought came to Captain, uh, Jodkowski that, uh, possibly they could, we could take the, most of the seats out and blacken out the windows and stuff or at least get somebody out of the weather and into a shelter and, you know, keep some of the clothing and equipment in, in one of the, uh, older, older vans. You know, the van doesn't have to be able to get there in a brand new condition, it just has to be able to get there. So it made some sense to, uh, use that surplus vehicle to support our own operations with the bomb squad. I, I don't see him here today, but that, that, that was his idea, uh, not mine. And of course, the third one is the ones we took all the parts off of to put the other two together. So we have to, uh, we have to scrap that out. But it's, it's nice that once they, we, we become obsolete in those, that we're able to transfer them to a good purpose, at least some of them. And we'll scrap the other one and raise a little bit of money, uh, for, for transit. And with that, we'll be placing a couple of the new buses, uh, into service and, uh, rotating the, uh, rolling stock a little bit.
Good, great, thank you.
Ms. Cal?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under workforce development, approved and entered contract with Ross Incineration Services, Inc., Elyria, for the vendor training with incumbent work funds in the amount of ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and ten cents and employee contribution in the amount of five thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Authorized county administrator execute on behalf of board of prosecutors approved as to form.
Uh, Mr. Cordez, if I make the motion, who is bringing, are they bringing anyone up here to talk about it or?
You know, this, this, this one's been languishing for a while and, and I didn't get anybody to come up. This is Ross's third time using the funds. I, I gotta give them credit. Ross has done a lot of training out there. They do a lot of training and they've found a way to be able to use federal dollars coming into this community to offset that so that they can continue to grow and retain and expand jobs in Lorraine County. Let, let, let me take an opportunity here. If there's businesses out there that have training needs, especially those that, that, that are looking at potential layoffs or, uh, they're bringing in a new piece of equipment and we can demonstrate that there may be some layoff aversion, we can bring training dollars on a, on a match basis with those companies to offset some of those training, um, uh, costs. We, we haven't had a lot of activity in the last year, year and a half with those dollars. We did initially for quite a while and we still have dollars available. One of the, one of the things that's happening here, uh, because we put so, quite a bit of money aside, we're not able to roll them again this year. So we're in a use it or lose it environment with regard to the, the money that was converted to layoff aversion rapid response dollars and workforce development. So we wanna, we wanna not lose those monies back to the state, but we can't, we, we cannot even convert them back into dollars that would roll. So you'll be seeing a contract here with the, uh, very soon in June, uh, probably with the Workforce Institute to encumber those dollars so we can continue to work with these businesses and have a, have a tool in the tool bag, uh, to offset these training costs. But we must encumber this money before the end of June or we, we're gonna lose it back to the state and we don't want that to happen. And we're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars.
Do we still have Don, um, what was his name, the one that helped?
We haven't had Don for a year.
Yeah, he's been gone.
Right, so who's helping these companies fill out the paperwork and getting, cause I know a lot of companies probably figure they don't want to deal with it. It's government, too much red tape, so is there somebody to help facilitate that?
We've been doing so with WDA, Business Connects and all of our partners in the growth partnership that meet with companies over versed and have the collateral materials and are able to assist or at least put them on point with somebody that can help them out with this. Uh, we also have a, uh, contract, uh, for Bill Ullik, who's been on board with the Workforce Institute to go out and do some, uh, uh, business outreach. Right now, I'm looking at the, the new collaterals that they're making for the companies to be able to provide for that. Staffing has always been our big point. It's always been troublesome getting out and getting into the businesses because of staffing and Business Connects was doing a lot of that, but then we lost, uh, person in Business Connect and we haven't filled that position to date. I'm waiting for recommendations to come down from, uh, community development. But we need to really re-jumpstart that effort because that was our outreach into these businesses to be able to provide the collateral and the materials and get them a little bit of a taste of, uh, the potential for collaboration. And, uh, we've slowed in that area, so we need, we need, you know, I need to be able to talk about these things more frequently and hopefully somebody will pass the word. Businesses have training needs. We can, we can do, uh, on-the-job training, we can do layoff aversion, uh, we can possibly do internships. The, the, uh, the college in collaboration with the Workforce Institute and Lorraine County Growth Partnership and WDI just received, uh, almost, uh, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant to do additional internships, uh, this, uh, going on in the next year. There were only one of two organizations in the northern end of the state to, to receive that. So those internships are also gonna be worked, we're in conjunction with, uh, the business outreach and the work experience coordinator, youth work experience coordinator at the WDA. So the interlacing of resources is, you know, while it appears very complicated, we got a lot of people, uh, trying to do things together. So we need to make that outreach. So if you know of any businesses, let us know.
So it is a fifty-fifty match. Fifty, we pay half of it and they pay half of it, correct?
It, it's, some of it's on a sliding scale depending on the size of the company, so it'd be too easy for me to, yes, that's correct, but it could be a little bit different depending on the size of the organization. Also, it's not just that they match training. Remember, we fought that war a couple of years ago with the matching on the wages. We, we, we went, we went federal with DOL and they finally yielded, uh, so they can use a wage match. So, uh, like, we like to joke, while the butts are in the seat being trained and they're paying them, we can use that, what they're paying them to match the training. So we can almost pay a hundred percent of the training if they can use their indirect cost or their facilities cost to, uh, match what we pay for the training.
And this is still our project ten.
It's still our project ten.
Not layoff aversion anymore.
Well, no, no, no.
We have two things.
We, well, let me back up. It, it's still project ten, but it is layoff aversion. It's not, not that it's not anymore, it is.
It's the same.
One of the, one of the, one of the changes that came down is that in order to use these project ten, what we were calling project ten, train your employees now, uh, dollars, you didn't have to have layoff aversion in there before. It, it was more to promote the, uh, good health and retention and expansion needs of a business. Now we just have to justify that unless we, we, we move and do this training and move the company in this direction to potential-
Of layoff.
Yeah, cause a lot of companies don't want to say that they're going to lay off ahead of time, correct?
Lots of them will say lots of things when they get free money.
Okay.
So the, the, uh, but depending on the size of the, the company, depending on the type of training, will, is a sliding scale. But, but sometimes we can pay for a hundred percent of that training.
Madam Clerk? Would you like to make the motion?
Ms. Cal?
I'll so moved.
Second?
Ms. Cal?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under domestic approved amendment for domestic relations with Compass Group, USA, Inc., buying through its canteen correction services division for an increased sliding scale on food cost effective July first, two thousand one through June thirty, two thousand twelve.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Cal?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the engineer approved annual report on maintenance of ditches in accordance with the Ohio Revise Code sixty-one thirty-one twenty oh six.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Cal?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Award contract to JAG Co. Construction in the amount of forty thousand, five hundred for Lorraine Grange Road, concrete repairs, Carlisle Township. Two bids were received on May thirteenth, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Estimate was forty-two thousand, five hundred and will be paid from the engineering project count and partial reimbursement through TID. Issue notice to proceed within sixty days. Authorized county administrator notify the auditor to release, retain as a completion of project.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Cal?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, county minister?
Thank you. Um, I do have one issue, uh, with regard to, uh, discussion I have with Commissioner Calo regarding, um, providing an amicus brief, uh, and joining a lawsuit, uh, which would be against the, um, well, which would actually would be trying to, uh, I want to be careful how I say this.
It's the ability to sue our county engineer and the engineers association. We've always talked about the indirect costs they don't pay back out of motor vehicle gas tax. There's a statewide lawsuit and all the counties have been asked to join it so we can get some direction as to whether indirect costs can and cannot be paid. I'd asked Jim to get us some dollars and cents on that.
I, I did, I did-
I don't know if you got those or not.
I did not receive that this morning, if I did, it was not an email bunch that I got, and I wish I had it. This one is more specifically carved out of the indirect costs with regards to insurance and liability insurances that are unpaid by the engineers. As you know, over the years, there's been up and down opinions and lawsuits of whether the insurance cost and liabilities can be paid for motor vehicle gas tax.
You're talking about COSA?
Well, it wouldn't be COSA, and it'd be COSA in our county because we pay the premiums to COSA, but more specifically, the amount allocated that would be, how many tens of thousands of dollars, they had to procure their own insurance. Right now, we're paying for that out of the general fund. This has been an up and back and forth argument that predates myself here. And so, we're on the, we were on the losing end of the last decision, as far as the counties went, not Lorraine County. And they're taking it, I believe, to the Ohio Supreme Court, and they're asking for the counties to all join on and file an amicus brief in support of the, this legal action. The legal action is not necessarily against our county engineer, they'll pick an engineer and they'll, what they do is win against one county and then we're fine, but we don't get paid for those dollars, and we're talking about significant amount of money for the liability and risk insurance to cover all the engineers working the engineers' vehicles, which right now.
That's the only indirect cost that we're going after is just insurance, or are we going after all indirect costs?
Some of the indirect costs we're required, we can't recover because we're required under the code to provide certain facilities, some we could. A lot will come out of what this lawsuit says. But with regard to, you know, housing the county engineer and things like that, there is, there is general fund responsibility for a lot of the things that are done with the engineer, but not all.
And how many counties are on board so far with this lawsuit?
I don't have the numbers, and I received the email yesterday, so I forwarded to Jim for discussion.
Now, there's, I think there's 66 counties in COSA. I'm assuming that they'll get the bulk of those from COSA. I could find out that number, but right now, they're saying it'll be no COSA, we just need to file that we're in support of this litigation.
I just think it goes back to all the discussions we've had about special funds and bringing dollars back to the general fund that we're expending. I don't see any harm in joining the lawsuit, because it is multiple counties, to get a final say on what the rules are in art and what we're entitled to or not entitled to.
So if we don't go on board, if they rule in the county's favor, we don't benefit automatically anyway, so I mean, why do we need to be a part of that?
If they ruled in favor of the counties, we would be able to collect those premium payments.
Even if we're not engaged, correct? I mean, do we?
That's true, that's true.
Correct.
I would agree with that, yes.
I think what they're looking for is the strength of most of the counties agreeing that this is an issue that should go before the Supreme Court to get a final decision. So you're either at the table or you're not at the table when it comes to something Lorraine County wants to address. We've talked about indirect costs through a lot of departments that we don't seem to collect or can't, don't have the ability to collect.
Well, the bills are going out again, we're getting ready to send them, and we have a lot uncollected, we have a lot of rent uncollected, we have some that used to pay that say they can't pay anymore, that unless you want me to go out there and evict them and put their furniture on the sidewalk, these are dollars that the general fund, it used to be that the board was more agreeable to assisting, but we don't have the availability anymore of those resources. This is one that's very expensive, there's a lot of trucks, a lot of equipment, and a lot of risk with regard to what they do. It's an old issue, it's, and I'll say it again, the counties were on the losing end of the last decision.
And how long ago was that?
Couple of years.
Just a couple of years ago, and we think something's changed in the last two years that could benefit us now?
Well, if things didn't change, we wouldn't have a succession of higher courts to look over what the lower courts have done. So can things change? Sure they could. I, sometimes you prevail in one system and you lose in the other. The ability to charge back the cost of actually operating road equipment and the insurance for that seems to be, to me, a legitimate use of motor vehicle gas tax. The equipment needs to be out there to repair the roads, and gas taxes out there to buy the equipment to repair the roads, but it's not out there to insure the vehicles, it doesn't make much sense.
Well, I guess as long as it doesn't cost us anything to move forward, I would be in favor of that, just to get a final answer.
Jim, do you know what the cost of the insurance is for Lorraine County?
We pay almost, almost $900,000 a year. If we rolled in, there's pieces of it sometimes, little pieces that come in, but I would say we're safe if we cap it somewhere in $850,000 to $900,000 a year. And that fluctuates, sometimes we get rebates and we do things with COSA to get, like this year, we're eligible for about $25,000 in savings if we do certain things with the safety councils and so forth, and risk management issues, which Joanne, she's, you know, she's a one-woman tornado over there, and she deals with so much, and she's on track now to comply with those things to get us a little money back. But it fluctuates based upon our claims, because we're also in a self-insured pool, and then we're rated based upon, you know, our claim volume and so forth, with regard to what our premiums are gonna be. The, but providing the insurance has become very, very costly over the years.
Is this something that we needed a decision on today?
I got this, you know.
Yesterday when Jim and I met, I just got my email, so I brought it out, we've discussed going after indirect costs. I know the engineer's office has always been an issue with motor vehicle gas tax.
I was planning on talking to the commissioners later today, but I knew that we weren't gonna have our general admin session over lunch, because we weren't going into a ZEC, so that's the only reason I brought up, I didn't wanna surprise anybody with this.
I'd like to wait at least a week so I can see the email that you received and...
Can you forward it to the commissioners, Jim?
Perfect. I don't have, I don't have anything additional this morning, thank you.
Mr. Anas, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I have a couple pending litigation issues, but since you're not gonna have an executive session, there's no reason I can't hold those till next week.
Commissioner's report.
I have no comments this morning.
Oh, I received a phone call from Dr. Lockhart this morning, who was one of the deputy coroners. I received a phone call last night from the Morning Journal, I believe the two commissioners did, for an article that said the entire staff was leaving when it came to the deputy coroner. Dr. Lockhart left a message, I have to call him back yet to talk, but he spoke with my assistant, Toni Ann, and said he wishes to stay on as the assistant deputy coroner, whatever his position is there, filling. So just for some clarification, he said he never heard from the press, so Kelly, as a follow-up, Dr. Lockhart says he never spoke to anybody, but he does not plan on leaving unless he's asked to leave. No clarification. End of my report. Ms. Williams?
What are we gonna do about that, Jerry? I mean, we have to have a coroner, if he's leaving in June, what's the process? I mean, we can't go without a coroner.
Well, it's up to the Republican Party to appoint a successor.
That's what I thought, but I don't...
They have up to 45 days by law to appoint and fill the position.
I was legally, I know Counselor can give you the answer on that, I was actually just thinking about this yesterday. Given that Doc Mattis has indicated that he would leave when practically capable, and he has indicated that the end of June was his targeted agenda, I hope that they would have something in works right now. Could there be a period where we needed to gap that and the county needed to do something? I guess that's the question. The answer is yes. The answer is, am I thinking about a solution? The answer is yes. And I will have, I will have, hopefully, some potential options available in the next week or two. I don't know that Doc Mattis would walk out the door without a seamless process. Have not had that discussion with him, but the ability to contract for these services is there, should we have a gap between the appointment and the loss of our current coroner? I will say, the complication on this matter for me is the changes that are going on in Cuyahoga County. If they weren't going through their own massive upheaval right now, it would have been much easier to have this option in place as a potential trigger if we needed to pull it.
Well, I think we have Medina, Erie, and Huron.
We do, and that's why I just haven't gotten, I haven't gotten down to a couple of those adjacent counties yet to speak with them, but I will have an option in place for the commissioners need be. And also recognizing that today, well, actually, I got the journal call last time myself, and then I read the paper this morning, I wasn't as concerned, because I didn't know that most of the staff people were leaving, so I had thought that I could possibly get a temporary contract with one of them to, you know, step up in the absence of Doc Mattis as long as the period was short. A lot of those options have evaporated.
Well, Dr. Lockhart said he'd like to stay, so if it's one option, I'll have...
I'll call with Dr. Lockhart and see what the potential there is, but we will develop options.
Only as an assistant?
Yeah, but just a stopgap though until the Republican Party appoints a new one. If you can forward Doc Lockhart's phone number over to Jimmy, we can have some discussion.
There's always options, there's always alternatives, so I'll be working on it, but I don't anticipate, I don't really anticipate Doc Mattis leaving us high and dry. I just don't, but I'll have that discussion, and I will develop those options for the board. I have been thinking about it, so thanks for bringing it up.
Mr. Williams?
Okay, well, a week or so ago, I went out to Nord Middle School in the city of Amherst, and actually, I was out there for my daughter for the DARE graduation, and I got to meet Deputy Joe Greiner. I'd like you to have him come up to the podium and just tell us a little bit about the DARE program, and then he's gonna introduce a young lady who gave, I think, an exceptional essay on what the DARE program meant to her. And I just wanna let people know what our sheriff deputies are doing, they're not just always out on the road arresting the bad guys, they're actually in the schools, helping the kids, and Joe, you're not gonna get the reception that you got at Nord Middle School with over 350 kids screaming for you, but welcome, and thank you for taking the time out of your day.
Good morning. My name is Deputy Joe Greiner, I'm with the Lorraine County Sheriff's Office, and I took over the DARE program back from the beginning of the 2010-11 school year. That DARE program consists of four school jurisdictions of, we, Midview, which covers Grafton, Leary City students, and Eaton Township, Columbia, Station, the Columbia Schools, Fireland Schools, and then, of course, the city of Amherst to Nord Middle. The program's a 10-week program that, which, at the end of the program, there is a DARE graduation, and it's taught to fifth grade, 10, 11-year-olds. The DARE program is changed a little bit from what we typically know about with the tobacco, alcohol, and drugs. It's grown through the years, and now we address problems that are very current and real in our schools, bullying, peer pressure, friendship foundation, and the support groups that go with that. And I did have the pleasure of dealing with these students throughout the years, and it was quite exceptional, quite exceptional experience. The last, the last assignment, I guess, for the DARE students is they have to write a DARE essay, and that states what DARE has meant to them, how it's affected their lives personally. And we do have the pleasure of having Taylor Brown with us, she was a student of mine with Nord Middle School. All the students submitted an essay, and one is chosen throughout the whole school of whoever's written the best essay for that school, and Taylor was that student, so I'd like to introduce her and have her come on up and share with us her essay.
Pull the microphone down, there you go.
DARE is so important to me for so many reasons. I know what drugs and alcohol can do to me. I've known that ever since I was old enough to understand things. My dad smoked and drank, and I always knew that someday soon, something was going to happen. Well, I was right, he died last summer. I swore that I'd never smoke in my life. It's hard to think he died from drugs, it's sad. And to imagine just putting a cigarette in your mouth, what it could do to your body and brain, it could cause you to lose your life. DARE has shown me so much, it's made me a smarter person. It's shown me how drugs really mess with your life, especially like sports, your friends, and your attitude. That's, that could really change your reputation, and that's not good for you or your family. You could get lung cancer, too. There's no good thing about smoking and drinking, so why start? I wouldn't, it's a very stupid idea. Never let anyone tell you to do these things, it leads to stupid ideas, believe me, I know. DARE means a lot, it's an honor to be a former DARE student, knowing that things in my life that happened to me could change the way I feel about DARE. My dad was a good police officer, and he was so kind unless he was drinking. I cried knowing that he wouldn't be there when I grow up, just because of the drugs and drinking. He would smoke, and I would say, "Dad, please stop, I don't want you to die." He would try, but it was hard for him, and the drinking and smoking was addicting. Then the drinking made him a more angry person, and messed with his brain, and while he suffered the horrible consequences, death. It changed me a lot, made me a whole different kind of person. Then one day in school, we have DARE, I learned a lot more, and I'm thankful for that.
Taylor, just, I senior teacher last night, and she just wanted to let you know how proud she is, and how proud the Nord Middle School is of you. Also, your classmates, it was amazing seeing you speak to 350 of your peers, plus another 300 parents there, and just the exceptional job that you did. So thank you again for coming today and sharing this, and we have a certificate of recognition for Ms. Taylor Brown. Recognize you as the winner of the DARE essay contest. Your hard work and skills achieved your success. We extend our appreciation to you for your accomplishment. And this is from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Ted Kahlo, Ms. Lori Kocowski, and myself. Thank you again, and Joe, great job, and all I can tell you is, I was out at Nord Middle School for Career Day, and the kids were still talking about you on Friday, the day after, so.
Thank you much, and I can't say enough how proud I am of Taylor as well, it was an amazing essay. You know, the DARE program came to the Sheriff's Office back in 1989, and it has grown a lot since then, not just for the students that we teach, but the curriculum that is based, that is DARE. And Sheriff's Committee and the Sheriff's Office continue to support the DARE program is, I think is essential for the county and the community, because it is important, and I'm happy to be a part of it, so thank you.
One last thing, Joe, what was the turnout you told me out at one of the schools with the parents and that?
We had one at Midview, and when we had the one at Midview, it kept growing, that we had to change the venue three times, and there was close to 1,500, 2,000 people and students that showed up for the event. It was, and I'll tell you what, it's incredible to support, not just from the teachers, because I'll tell you what, the teachers are a partnership in this, because I couldn't do without them. You know, I had a crash course on education, I mean, being a police officer coming to teach the DARE program, but they're the ones that, you know, helped me through it and deal with the students, but the parents, you know, we need the parents' help and support as well. And all the schools this year, great support from the staff, the parents, the schools, it's amazing. So hopefully it'll continue, and we're good, happy to be a part of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just an aside, Commissioner, actually, Taylor's almost like family, we spent all our holidays together, and her grandparents, and her dad, Jack, actually was like a brother to my wife, so we've been friends forever, great job, Dave. See you at the swimming pool next week, maybe?
Well, if we could go ahead and take a photo, and I got one other thing for my report. Last thing I wanted to bring up was the performance audit that we spoke about last week. I got an email from MATE, from State Auditor's Office. If we would wanna go through and try to get money for the, from the LEAP program, we have to submit an application by the 31st. If we submit the application, it does not, we're not going into a contract to have the audit done. So what I would like to do is go through, submit the application, and then once we get the, if we are granted the LEAP money, then we can take a look at, should we go forward with the writing the scope and having the State Auditor's Office come in.
I am in favor of that, I did talk to Mr. Cordez however yesterday, and he said he still hadn't received the information that he asked for, from them last week. Did you receive that yet?
Well, no, I also got a copy of the email, though. The, I thought that we were gonna look over, and that doesn't preclude what Commissioner Wade wants to do, but I had, I guess I made a slight challenge to what are the qualifications of people that are gonna be reviewing us with... but I had, I guess I made a slight challenge to what are the qualifications of people that are going to be reviewing us with? On a performance audit, normally you would want to know the background of the people that are going to be auditing you. The, you know, and the depth of their experience of the review. The, when I'm looking at doing work for myself, I always want to know the qualifications of the people I'm bringing in. And to date, I have not seen anything about anything on the qualifications of these people, other than they work for the Auditor's Office.
No, I think that's a fair question on there. And what I would like to do is just go forward with the application. And then before we make a decision, I think that should be something that we get from the Auditor's Department, is who would be coming in to do the audit, what the qualifications are, and then having the board sit down and talk about the type of scope.
Right, as I indicated, this doesn't affect Commissioner Williams' position here. You know, with a financial audit, we know that the auditors hire, you know, the financial people, accountants, and so forth. With a, with a, with a performance audit, it's not completely different, but the expertise that are needed to do the review are different than what you would be doing in an accounting audit. And also, I spoke with Tom this morning. He brought that up. I don't have a problem applying for it, but still, we'd have to go over the scope of work as to what we'd actually be looking at to begin with. It was a nice presentation Nick did last week, but when we've got almost 4,000 political subdivisions, and he only stated two or three or four that they actually did, I don't see everybody quite jumping on board to have them come in and do the performance audit. I think if we make the scope relatively simple and know the qualifications of people performing that, it'd be a starting point, because I'm assuming this is an ongoing program. They said for the last 10 years, they've been doing it. I did miss some comments, which I made Mr. Williams aware of. After the, we've been talking about the issue of increasing our revenues, be it by sales tax fees or severe cuts. And with the looming budget cuts coming from the state of Ohio, I think we have to be cognizant of the issues we're going to face. And apparently, if you can explain yourself, Mr. Williams, and we touched on it briefly this morning, you wouldn't support any type of revenue enhancement or even going forward with sales tax talks without a performance audit. And I brought up, well, it makes it kind of on a timeline, because as Jerry Ennis has told us, we have to do additional public hearings and go on the ballot. Jerry, if you can help me by August 2nd, or it has to be certified prior to that?
July 27.
July 27. So I don't know where we're going back and forth, and not to call it blackmailing, but to do one to get to the other to talk about, I think we've got to come up with a compromise. Are we going to discuss them both concurrently?
Well-
And I brought this up to you this morning. I was going to discuss it out here.
You're not catching me off guard.
Right. I talked to you this morning.
And, no, the statement was, if you, if we don't do the performance audit, I'm not going to pass a sales tax increase, or vote to put the sales tax on the November ballot. It's, at this time, I'm not seeing what we've done really to put it on the November ballot. I do have concerns on that. And I've been going through, and I told you, I got some ideas on, that I'll probably propose next week to you. One of them is looking at, well, we possibly could do a temporary quarter percent sales tax, because looking at the numbers, we do have the casinos that are going to be coming in next three or four years. We could be looking at an increase there. And that would buy us some time to go through, possibly get the performance audit in, see where we could save money, and then also with the economy hopefully bouncing back.
Well, I was going to add to that, because I don't know if you saw it, just to bring it up, what we're talking about, I had the paperwork received this morning. Sales tax is up, not quite half a million dollars versus last year through May's numbers, so there is an uptick there helping, but other fees are dropping, so.
Right, the local fees are dropping, which we know. It's not that I'm disputing that the sales tax would help us. My dispute is, have we done enough right now? And I don't want to get into a permanent sales tax where we could be looking at additional revenue coming in in the next few years, so.
I just, I would have brought up last week your comments. The either-or scenario makes it kind of difficult to work.
No, it wasn't an either-or scenario, and it wasn't done intentionally after you left. It was just something that me and Ms. Kikowski got involved in. So, but we can bring this up. I think it'd be something maybe to talk about in next week's meeting.
Everything's on the table at this point.
Do we need a motion to at least make application for the LEAP program?
No, I think administratively, if you want to make application, we'll get the application out. Okay, so I'll pull up whatever we need to do, and we'll get it in by the timeframes.
Did they say how long, it probably depends on how deep we want them to go, but how long the performance audit would take?
Depends on the scope we ask for. Those are all the variables. Like I said, it's a very good presentation. I'm not against performance audit, that's fine, but as long as we have the scope of work and the people who are doing that performance audit. You don't want your plumber coming in and evaluating your electrical system.
Yeah, I know that.
So I mean, it's-
Well, I'd like to be transparent in all of this, especially if we do ask the voters for either a permanent or a temporary sales tax, that they realize that we have done everything that there is possibly to do to cut, which I believe we have, but there may be something out there we haven't thought of yet. So if there is something, you know, I would like to go ahead and make those cuts, too, so.
And with this, I would like to have Mr. Cortez, with the approval of the board, send out a encouraged other elected officials to also apply for, to apply for the LEAP money.
So the LEAP money has no dollar amount you're applying for, just whether you're qualified to receive any?
Correct.
Now, do they come back and say, "Okay, Lorraine County, you get $100,000, so you can only do a scope of work within $100,000", or is it an open-ended amount of money that we have to pay back within a year?
It's going, from what I was told, open-end.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, there's no harm in asking, or making the application, for sure.
Right.
And asking Mr. Cortez, yes, I would agree to that.
Got notes on both of them.
Got them.
Okay. Sorry to put additional work on you.
That's all right.
It's called job security.
You looked all broken up by that.
Any more reports?
End of my report.
Madam Clerk?
The Commissioners are issuing retirement proclamations to several people at job and families effective next Wednesday or Tuesday. Deborah Bork here in Washington, Lori Marisota, Deborah Levine, Lori Bate, and Maureen Muggen, and several coming the next month, so. For correspondence?
Move the reading to wait.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
And I also wanted to say, yesterday, we did have our in-house records training seminar. It went very well. We had over 90-some people attend.
It was crowded here.
It was crowded. And that's just in-house. That's not the other three-hour mandatory for the elected officialship.
But this one lasted about three hours, didn't it?
This was three hours. It was one and a half hours on email training and one and a half hours on records training. So hopefully, we had everybody on board.
Are you going to give us a summary?
I will.
Okay.
Public comment? Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Wow, no comments. Nothing, Elizabeth? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Get to adjourn for once.
I'm running executive session. I'm not used to that.
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye. Enjoy your three-day weekend.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aleria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings, children not educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't had any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4. Teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4 part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights, the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work, operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children. When you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say, "Left, right, left, behind you, in front of you", once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us. And we even had one child that came up to us and said, "You know what, Ms. Spansky? We were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, 'Look left, look right, look left.' So that was very rewarding." And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work, so they're just like, "Oh!" And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, "Well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it, because you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run?" And of course, they're very enthusiastic, and "No, we shouldn't do this." So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks, and just because one goes by and the signals stop doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk and continue to look both ways, because it's not safe. And they could fall. They could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous, because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming, because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in kindergarten through 4th grade. Some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take, you know, forever. It's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and 1st grade, and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids. A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no! Those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous. I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat. Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without-
The second video, we show 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Asimo. What's up, Asimo? How's it going?
Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Steppin' Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars. He goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups.
I think it was really nice, because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
It's a good idea, because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection, what happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars. Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to safety town, and they learn, "Look left, look right, look left again", and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did safety town, and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, "Matthew, remember Asimo?", and he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do, and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore. We can do what we want. We can take a chance and run across the road. And I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs. We still have to- We still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review. I think it was done in a fun, learning way and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
In 2009, Mr. Carney felt that if we expanded the program and went into the technological era, that we could cover more schools and help more students. We felt that 2nd, 3rd, and 4th graders would get much more out of it and enjoy it if it was on a computer. We use one disc that's called Walk Smart for 2nd and 3rd graders. It teaches the children where to walk, it teaches them things that they should know about traffic signals, and the third part of it is watching for cars. The 4th grade disc is called Safer Journey. That is in a three-part section with a fourth part that's added called Library, so that if they want to go back in as 4th graders and actually look up anything that they just viewed, it will give them a description. Each one allows the student to interact on the computer individually.
While you move the mouse back and forth, try it.
We thought the student will look at it, because they love to work on computers, so that they would look at it as fun and a game. And each student can work at their own level or at their own pace. Our response has been amazing.
They enjoy being on the computer, so I think just by clicking and being able to listen and observe those things, it's more interactive with them. This program is teaching the skills of being more observant as they're crossing the street and being more aware of what's going on around them.
It makes me work harder. We have to guess if the cars can come from which way. Gets my brain on learning.
It helps me learn how to cross streets and how to watch for cars.
You have to look both ways when you go across the street and everything? Because I like, because it would actually teach me something.
You know, sometimes we just think that students know exactly where they should be walking. There's a sidewalk and we know that they should cross at the light and look both ways.
It tells you what to do and what not to do in the street.
This just reinforces, because sometimes the students don't know all of those things. They haven't always been taught. They are much better off for being part of the program.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
How about a little trash talk about Lorain County Solid Waste Collection Center in Elyria? The collection center makes it easy for Lorain County residents with ID to get rid of stuff you don't want going into a landfill. Stuff like hazardous waste, acids, household bleach, oven cleaners, antifreeze, paint, herbicides. Take it to the collection center. It's a drive-through, so it's easy to get rid of scrap tires, even if they're on the rims. The collection center also takes e-scrap like computers and monitors, circuit boards, microwave ovens, smoke detectors, even household TVs up to 27 inches. No console models, fluorescent lights and ballasts, reference materials and books, fire extinguishers, all kinds of stuff. Drive-through, drop-off, just don't bring curbside recyclables, explosives, medical waste, radioactive materials. For what's accepted and not accepted, visit loraincounty.us/solidwaste. The collection center near Big Lots at 540 South Abbey Road in Elyria is a service of the Lorain County Solid Waste District, the Department of the Lorain County Commissioners.
Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties, secure and safe Ohio RideShare makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. 1-800-825-RIDE or register online at ohiorideshare.com. Point, click, ride.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorain County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorain County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorain County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorain County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial. And although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorain County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorain County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorain. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorain when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorain's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in 1823, while the township was in transition to the new Lorain County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskeville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices. And in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the US Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In 1917, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorain County's 21 townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In 1814, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in 1911, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in 1917. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in 1815 and 16. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until 1824, when the newly-elected Lorain County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the 1822 reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In 1816, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range 19. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding "Helm" to his family name. Like the old Saxon "ham," the suffix meant "home." The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July 4, 1817. The Village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossen in 1816. Ten years later, the Rossens were forced to build a grist mill or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village, the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Elyria Township, Carlisle was settled in 1816 by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorain County was being organized in 1822, Carlisle Township became its own entity. La Porte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In 1840, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorain County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township as sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over 10,000 acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Elyria and the city, which also bears his family name. In 1817, Artemus Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the 20th century. In 1822, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorain County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Elyria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorain County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation and in the winter of 1817 moved from New York State to the 160 acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in 1827. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in 1818, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from 1870 to 1900. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In 1818, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area and by 1822, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In 1824, when Lorain County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in 1818 requested detachment from Black River Township in 1825. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in 1833 and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipard and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed, but also multiracial and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in 1992, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In 1820, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of 1818. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of 1825. The first religious service was held in 1826 and the first school was in session in the summer of 1829. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorain County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of 1820, Abner Loveland Jr. became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Sr. had arrived and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of 1823, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorain County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in 1813, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of 1812. By 1820, the land was surveyed and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of 1821. By 1831, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporate a township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's residents. of the area's pioneers. LeGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who, in the fall of 1825, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of 1826, 14 more settlers had arrived. The name "LeGrange," which is French for "the farm," was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In 1827, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LeGrange. By 1875, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as LeGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock, who built the first frame house in 1833. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In 1835, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of 1836. When the first post office was established in 1835, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In 1852, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton. But that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in 1891. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized, or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of 1832 to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by 1835, the Commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of 1836. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By 1880, close to 700 citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.